Stage for the second half of our program. And audience, just stick with us. We're going to get going right away as soon as we get everyone here. We do have over 100 people watching right now, so we do have some, some folks out there taking part in watching.
How did I do?
Oh, you might want to, before you answer that, you may want to turn your microphone off. If that was.
You know, again, I told you at the beginning, I'm not very savvy with the electronics.
Okay. I wasn't going to identify who that was for the audience, but Tara just identified herself. Okay, so we are looking for, let's see, Cory and Sarah. Sarah, you're with us, sorry. And there we go. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Where is Mr. Odell?
Sir Odell, yeah.
Yep, hold on, I'll get him.
I'm not going to go out on a good step.
All right. All right, Bill, you're with us. Okay, so we have everyone here for the Bristol Forum. And for those of you, there's going to be a slightly different change to the format of this, not that big, but we have broken the group of eight candidates into two groups of four. So I'm going to ask a question to the first group. They're all going to have an equal chance to answer it, and then anyone else in the, in the forum is able to jump in if they want to talk about that topic. Once that's exhausted, I'm going to move to the other group of four, ask another question, and vice versa. The, the first group will have a chance to jump in and, and use any of their comment periods if they want. So we have, we're going to start with opening statements. We're going to go right through the eight opening statements. We're not going to do that with the opening statement, so we're going to begin 30-second open, opening statements. Mr. Bradshaw, you can kick us off.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to East Bay Media Group for hosting us tonight. My name is Brian Bradshaw. For 20 years, I've worked as an electrical engineer and project manager. But first and foremost, I'm a parent with two children attending KMS this year. I believe that all children can learn and succeed, and they deserve the best education we can give them. It's been my privilege to be a member of the Bristol Warren Regional School Committee for the last four years. It's been so exciting to see what talented and wonderful students we have. I'm energized by the direction our district is heading, and my commitment to our students is stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ben?
All right, thank you Scott and Jock for hosting this. Sincerely appreciate it, and thank you for Bristol residents who are watching. My name is Andrew Ben. I'm running for school committee. I've been a lifelong Bristol resident. I graduated from Bristol High School in the 1980s, mid 1980s. And I've been a teacher and administrator for over 20 years. I've been a building administrator, special ed administrator, director of technology, special ed teacher, history teacher. But before that, I was in the finance industry for over a decade.
Thank you. Ms. Cabral?
Hi, I'm, I just want to give you a little bit of my background. I've been a nurse for 25 years. I still currently have experience in the hospital, but for the last eight years, I have been a school nurse. I have been born and raised in Bristol, and I'm 49 years old. And I am ready to start giving back to the beautiful town of Bristol. And I think that school committee, given my current situation in employment, and would be a great fit for me.
Thank you. Ms. McBride?
Oh, sorry. I've been involved in the Bristol Warren Regional School District, first Bristol School District for 35 years. 20 of those years as a member of the, of the school committee. I am absolutely dedicated to the children in the district and to making sure that they're able to achieve everything that they want to. And I'd like to thank everybody for tuning in and for everybody who's participating. Good luck and Godspeed.
Thank you. Cory Deluse?
Hi. I am a Bristol resident and have been for the last 18 years, living in Warren. Prior to that, I am a dental hygienist and have been since 2009, a dental assistant previously before that. I am a 1999 graduate of Mount Hope High School. I have one child who was a 2020 graduate this year and currently have a third grader in the district. I've done advocacy for special education, and I'm running because I'm passionate to make every student's needs met and their voices and their families' voices heard.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
And thank you. My name is Jamie Brooks. I'm the proud daughter of the late James Ariel Souza and Lorraine Souza. I hold a bachelor's degree in political science from Providence College and a master's degree in human relations from the University of Oklahoma. I have over 25 years' experience as a healthcare administrator, working in both the profit and nonprofit sectors, as well as unionized and non-unionized environments. These are challenging times for all of us, but particularly for our school-aged children, parents, and teachers. In addition to traditional concerns, 2020 has brought a host of intense issues with COVID management, distance learning, and safety protocols in our school. Bristol needs different perspectives and skills represented on its committee. My experience as the mother of three biracial children, two present seniors at Mount Hope High School, and a senior at Boston College will add an important point of view to this discussion. My goal is to represent and speak on behalf of all students, parents, and teachers, and to ensure an equal and inclusive education that meets the highest of standards.
Thank you. Mr. Odell?
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity to hear this evening. Thank you for hosting. My name is Bill Odell, running for school committee. I've been a lot of carrier here in Bristol for almost 34 years. So if you own a mailbox, I've seen your house. I've driven down your street. I know your neighborhood. I know this town. I love this town. I've also spent 20 years serving on the school committee. I've been treasurer. I've been secretary. I've been chair of the budget subcommittee. I've been chair of the transportation subcommittee. I've been chair of the policy curriculum subcommittee. And I enjoy serving as a public servant in this town. I enjoy serving the students and the teachers in our school district. And I hope to continue to do that after a two-year double sabbatical. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bullard?
Thank you Scott and Jock and East Bay Media Group. I appreciate the opportunity to participate tonight. My name is Sarah Bullard, and I am excited to be running for Bristol School Committee seat. I hope to bring a fresh perspective to the table with my experience in early childhood education, community health and family support, and 14 years of volunteering in and for the schools. Our family of six settled in Bristol in 2006, in the middle of my husband's Navy career. And we chose to raise our children in this beautiful place because of all it has to offer. We've tried to contribute as much in return, and I look forward to doing that as part of the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move right on to questions. We're going to start with the first group. Mr. Bradshaw, first question will go to you. Each of you has a one-minute response to this question, and then when we're done with that, anyone else wants to jump in? Feel free, just let me know. First question, are you satisfied with the district's strategy and execution for reopening schools this fall?
Thank you very much. I am, when we initially were looking at reopening schools, I was in favor, I voted to give the superintendent one more week. What we've seen so far is that some of the students that wanted to be in school or are in school, not everybody is in school, of course, that, that wanted to be in, in, in full time. I think that the district's response with what we were hearing from the Rhode Island Department of Health and Ride was absolutely in step with that. I think we did a fantastic job preparing the schools. I actually was able to get into the schools before we opened with the measuring tape, measuring 60. And I think that it's important that we understand that as a school committee, our priority is the safety and security of our students. And so we have to do what's in their best interest first, and I think we've done that.
Thank you. Mr. Ben?
Okay, I think I still have a question. So I do, I believe the school committee and the district has done a decent job with the reopening of schools. Do I think it could have been better? Possibly. The, we are living in very interesting times where no one could have foresaw what happened last March. And education is probably, you know, a leader in terms of transitioning its workforce. So distance learning last spring might have been a different thing, the way it looked if we had prepared a little bit better this fall. There's a distant, there's a difference between distance learning and virtual learning, and I think we could have explored those opportunities for better virtual learning opportunities. But overall, I do think the district has done a decent job, the superintendent and the school committee, in terms of following the direction of the Department of Education and the Department of Health.
Thanks. Ms. Cabral? You're done, you're muted.
Can you repeat the question again?
Yeah. Are you satisfied with the district's strategy and execution for reopening schools this fall?
Um, I think that we can't really, we can't really judge. I mean, the kids are back in school, and that's where they need to be. First and foremost is their safety, and right now, myself, I'm, I'm in the trenches as a school nurse, and things are changing every day. It's very hard. I see students and teachers and parents, we're all, you know, trying to do the right thing. Everybody's trying to follow the protocols in order to maintain safety. It's, it's really hard. Things are changing every single day. We just got new recommendations from the CDC. So to say, am I satisfied? I feel like that's a judgment, and I, I don't think any of us are in position to, to really judge this, this, this time during the pandemic.
Thank you. Ms. McBride?
I think we can, I'm in a position to judge because I saw what we did. I think we were very well-prepared in March with the program that we had introduced for having computers for all children. But I think that we could have done a better job of having the high school open this fall. And I think it's a lesson learned, and I think that that's how you move forward. You learn from your mistakes, you admit them, and you move on. I think we're doing a very good job now of keeping our children safe and educated to the best of our ability during this time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to jump into this ques-? Anyone else want to jump into this question? Okay, we're going to move to a new question with the second group. Ms. Deluse is going to start with you. Is the district asking too much of teachers, or are there challenges realistic under these circumstances?
After talking with quite a few teachers, I definitely think there's some challenges. It's unprecedented times. And I've heard from teachers that it is a real struggle with them trying to do distance learning and teaching in a classroom at the same time. That's got to be a very hard dynamic for them. I know a lot of teachers are putting in a lot of extra hours in order to get the curriculum out to the students, get things graded, provide extra help. So I definitely think that, you know, we need to support the teachers because they are putting in a lot of extra hard work.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
Can you repeat the question, Scott, please?
Yes. Is the district asking too much of teachers, or are there challenge, are their challenges realistic under these conditions?
So, um, I think, I think we're asking a lot of our teachers in that trying to balance a classroom of in-person learning with virtual learning with perhaps not all the technological supports that could be there is something that our teachers face. And I'm grateful that our teachers are back in the classroom, and I know that they're dealing with a lot. You don't think, I don't think it's fair in terms of the expectations, but COVID hasn't been fair to us, right? So I think they're doing the absolute best job that they can. I'd love to see any additional supports that we can provide for the teachers in this environment, but where we're at right now, it's a day-by-day, case-by-case struggle, and I applaud the teachers for the hard work that they're doing. And anything that we can do to continue to support them is definitely needed.
Thank you. Mr. Odell?
Yeah, the question is, are we asking too much of our teachers? I like to ask the question, are we giving too little teacher support? You know, we're saying, these students want to get there. One wants to get there on a plane, the other wants to get there on a train, the other one gets there on a boat. So we're saying to the teacher, you need to know how to fly the plane, drive the train, and sail the boat. Well, guess what? They didn't sign on for that. Nobody foresaw this thing coming. And I'm very concerned that the teachers may be in, in real genuine need of additional teacher support. If we are asking too much of them, it's our fault. And if it's our fault by asking too much of them, we need to say, okay, teachers, you tell us, what do you need for teacher support? What additional training do you need? We're going to supply you with those things. We cannot let the teachers fall through, through the trap door on this. You know, you can take a lot of things out of a classroom, and teaching and learning will still take place. You take the teacher out of the classroom, and learning stops completely. You've got to have the teacher. You've got to have a well-trained teacher. You've got to have a teacher that's jazzed about teaching their students and not upset over what's going on. We need to support the teacher 100%. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bullard?
Yes, I have spoken to several teachers in the community, and the stress level is definitely very high. I don't know exactly what is being asked of them to answer that specifically, but I do think they are feeling the stresses of the situation that they are in, as we are all in. And I mean, I agree with what Jamie said. The pandemic has created such an uncertain situation for all of us, and, and everybody's lives are different. So if there is a way that we can find out what they might need that could make things better, could make things easier, could facilitate more successful teaching and learning, then I think that we should do that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to respond to this question? Okay, seeing no one, I'll move to another question, back to the first group. It's going to start with Mr. Ben, and then we'll rotate through Ms. Cabral, Ms. McBride, and Mr. Bradshaw. Next question, what is your understanding of, quote, "social emotional initiatives" and the role they play in education? Is the district taking the right steps in the area of social, excuse me, social emotional education?
Okay, well, that's a large question there. Social emotional learning is, is a component that goes along with the teaching of the whole child, where you make sure the child gets the counseling they need and is emotionally supported in the ways that they need to be healthy. Do I think the district is doing enough, or the initiatives, social emotional initiatives in the district? Yes, I think that we've made great strides over the past probably 10, 15 years in terms of social emotional learning. Do I think we still fall short in this regard, in terms of IEP, specifically IEP regulations and servicing our children as needed? I think we do still fall short in servicing special needs children the way they do need to be supported. So I think we need to improve that.
Thank you. Ms. Cabral?
I'm not sure the specifics of how social emotional learning is being addressed, but I do know that that the school committee are, has had to fight for some positions being eliminated, and, and they were successful. So I'm pleased with that. I do think it's important to have the psychologists, the nurses, obviously, I'm supportive of. And social emotional learning is paramount. If, if the kids are not, if they're not in a place where, you know, they're, they're not worrying about other things that are going on at home, that other things that are going on in their, just in their own personal development, then they're not going to be able to, to sit there and learn math and learn English and, and get an education that they deserve.
Ms. McBride?
I think that social emotional teaching, learning, is just a component, as Andrew said, to the whole child and our attempt to educate the whole child. We haven't always done as good a job as we could have, but I believe that we have stepped up to the plate and understood that that's a critical part of the children's education. So with that being said, I, I think that we are doing a good job. One of the things that a school committee individual can't get involved in is in special ed. That's separate and apart from the school committee decisions. But I will say, as a whole, we are doing a very good job with social emotional learning amongst our students. Thank you.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Could you just repeat the question, please?
Yes. What is your understanding of social emotional, of social emotional initiatives and the role they play in education? Is the district taking the right steps in the area of social, social emotional education?
Okay, I, I will start with the, the last part first. I think we are making progress. I think we saw a few years ago, a couple of years ago, especially at the middle school, there were concerns, especially with the teachers, and, and we know how that all played out. And since then, we've established the connections classroom at, at KMS and additional supports at Tukeole School. As I said, I think all students can learn. All students can succeed. But sometimes there are things that get in way, in the way of their learning. As was mentioned, there, it could be trouble at home. It could be a, a lack of food, a lack of proper housing. It could be all sorts of family problems. So we have to have those, those programs in place that can, when we see a, a student kind of escalating, that we can bring them into a safe space, talk with them, understand what they're going through, and allow them to re-regulate themselves and get back in the classroom so that they can continue their education. One of the biggest things is, is when you're, when you're emotional, when you're having a rough day, your brain is going to go away from the task at hand. I think we have the programs in the schools, especially at KMS and Tukeole School, to help our students get back focused and centered on learning.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Brooks?
Thank you, Scott. So I couldn't agree more with Mr. Bradshaw. And I think as part of our everyday learning, what he described is critical. But right now, at this time, we need social and emotional supports more than ever. The things that our kids are dealing with at home, the things that families are facing, unemployment, the death through COVID, I think as a school committee, we need to look at how we can continue to support social and emotional needs at its highest point right now.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Deluse?
So to touch on the social emotional supports, I feel like there has been a good bit of improvement in the district to help with those aspects. I'm concerned coming down the line with the amount of students who are possibly distance learning and dealing with some of the aspects that Ms. Brooks had mentioned, and the fact that we have a population of special education students that don't have full access to the services they normally would have. I sat in a meeting where a special educator talked about a child that had severe behavior issues, finally breaking down, admitting it was because she couldn't read. So I want to ensure that we have adequate support when we do bring these kids back into school. If they have fallen behind, you know, curriculum-wise and aren't proficient, that those don't start turning back into the behaviors we were seeing previously. And I really think that's something that we really need to address.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to another, yeah, Mr. Odell, please, go ahead.
Thank you very much, as a chime in for a brief second or two. The question was, what is my understanding of social and emotional education? Now, that, that's the key. In order for the committee or a committee member to gain an understanding of what's going on, there's a thing called a workshop that, where the committee invites people in, from the administration, from the staff, to engage in a particular subject in order to educate the school committee. Because you can say social emotional education, it can mean different things to different people, but you've got to be on the same page. So what I would need to do as a member of the committee, invite these people in, all right, show me what you're doing, explain what you're doing. Define the things that you are doing as far as social emotional education is concerned. You can say it, and I can say it, we can mean two different things. We've got to be on the same page in our understanding of what's going on.
Thank you. Okay, new question for group number two, beginning with Ms. Brooks, and then Mr. Odell, Ms. Bullard, and Ms. Deluse. So next question, based on what you know of the curriculum priorities and strategies in the district, would you like to see changes at any level of the system in curriculum priorities or strategies?
So I do think that while the district is doing well, I, I think that we need to look at some key areas. And we've talked a lot about in our campaigns about CTEs and making sure that we are developing curricula for those students where college is the pathway for them. So I think we definitely need to build upon the forward movement that the current school committee has done and continue in that positive direction. I also think that we need to continue to look at diversity and inclusion curricula. I think the town, the community, the teachers, the administrators, and the students did a great job with putting a course together for the high school for the spring, but it shouldn't stop there. We definitely need to look at how we incorporate diversity and inclusion education into our current curricula. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Odell?
Yeah, it's, it's, quite frankly, it's not my style to come charging in with a particular agenda, something I want to see accomplished. I'm a conversation guy. I like to get the conversation rolling, get some very intelligent people in the room. Let's talk this thing out and see where we want to go together. That having been said, one of the big things I would like to change with the curriculum is an emphasis on the trades. You know, they say, well, the children today aren't interested that much in the trades. Well, they're not interested because we're not getting them jazzed. We need to get these kids jazzed about the trades. Let's have some, let's have like a career day, for example, a couple of career days a year, but middle school and the high school. Get the tradespeople in there. Get them out in the parking lot with the equipment. Show these students what it's like to work in particular trades, boat building, carpentry, so forth and so on, so that they can get excited about it, and demand is going to drive this. Right now, there's not much of a demand on the part of the students, and that's our fault. We need to get these kids jazzed on that. So that's one big thing that I would really push as far as curriculum concerned, and I would push that discussion big time. Other than that, I would be more in favor of the, for example, the policy curriculum subcommittee getting together with the administration and the people that design curriculum, and have a discussion there, see where we're at, and see as a group where we want to go from here.
Thank you. Ms. Bullard?
Thank you. I agree with the points that Ms. Brooks made and actually, everybody made about career and technical ed. I think there are lots of opportunities to make some effective changes. And I do feel like the district is, is in a transition period since changing over our district leadership, and there is new leadership at several of the schools. So change is in the air for our district. One thing I do think is lacking is, well, not lacking, but it's an area that could be improved, is preparing our students better for the transition from the middle school to the high school. I'm on my third kid who's made that transition, and each time, it's, it's been quite hard. And they're, you know, they're pretty decent students. So that's something that I think we need to look So that's something that I think we need to look at.
Thank you. Ms. Deluce.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. Based on what you know of the curriculum, the priorities, the strategies in the district, would you like to see changes at any level of the system?
I definitely agree with what most of the other candidates said. It's going to be very important to implement trade programs into the school to give access to children that necessarily don't have the means or the desire to pursue a college education. We have a national trade shortage, there's definitely job opportunity. And if we can get those skills with these kids early on, it's going to give them a shot straight out the gate to get an apprenticeship and be able to be, you know, productive members of society. I also feel that we need to work on the opposite end with some of the AP course curriculum. And looking at that aspect, because historically we haven't had as high of a percentage as we should for students that are able to pass the AP test for credit for those courses. So I really feel like that needs to be looked at as well.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Bradshaw, yes, go ahead.
So let's talk a little bit about trades and, and our career and technical education pathways. So under, under this current school committee, construction technology is, is in the works. Computer science and cybersecurity is in the works and looking for state approval. We have visual technical and performing arts, looking at using 21 and 22 as our design year, and then seeking state approval after that, biomedical technology in 2021 for design. So we have heard, and this has been a big, a big topic of conversation across the two towns for a number of years. We have heard the, the, the voice of the communities and we're responding. I'm also interested in supplementing that with some auto shop. I've spoken with some, some folks in the auto industry in town, and they are hurting for skilled workers. And I think we could use something like the iCar curriculum as a classroom based curriculum, and then using our local businesses as hands-on, hands-on work. And I, I'm looking forward to, to trying to tackle that in the next four years.
All right, anyone else on this? Yeah, Mr. Corral, go right ahead. You've got to unmute, sorry.
I'd also like to speak out about the trades in bringing them into our curriculum, into our schools. I firsthand, my stepson, he really would have benefited from that. I felt like he wasn't in college bound and I don't feel like he's, you know, a minority in that sense. And I would like to see that brought back into the schools and not just at a, I mean, I know we have to take baby steps, but I don't want to see just like at the level of building sheds and just construction, there needs to be plumbing, electricians. These kids need to, to be exposed to the trades. It's, there's, there's definitely a deficit in our, in our society with kids that are going into the trades and making it their career.
Yes, Ms. McBride.
I agree with Brian in, in that we have been working very hard to look at all of this and to see what, what it is we need to do for our students. One of the problems, big problems that we have is that we, it's not the finances to send the children to trade schools. It's the unwillingness of the students to either go there or stay there. One of the things that the high school did in the eighties that worked very well was to have a fixed schedule. If you have a fixed schedule, then you can do your coursework, which all students need in the morning, and you can go off in the afternoon to do whatever it is that interests you, to challenge yourself on a particular career path. So one of the things that I'd like to see done is that schedule changed so that the children can do that. I think we were much more successful then with that type of arrangement. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ben.
Hi, I just want to chime in on that after Ms. McBride. As far as having students involved with CTE programs, it's not something where they need to go on a district. It's something that, like Mr. Bradshaw mentioned, that the, the district is pursuing some new CTE programs within the district. These are, and, and this is great that we are finally moving towards more expansion of the CTE programs. However, it's critical that we move faster and with more bandwidth. Because the way CTE works with federal funding and Perkins funding is, and the reason I know this is I've launched a few CTE programs and written the planning grants for them. So you can't have a competing program in the same region. And we are in the same region as East Providence and Rogers. So whatever program they launch, we cannot. So that's why it's critical to look at the CTE programs and see whether there's no overlap and, and launch those CTE programs. Our students need skilled trades. They need that opportunity. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. McBride, you want to talk again?
Yeah, we can have whatever programs we choose to have depending on the funding in our district. But there, there, that comes at a cost. And that comes with a lot of changes to the curriculum and to the schedule. So I'd be very careful about how I looked at it and looked at all the different aspects of it before I made a decision on how I would move forward with it. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that I agree. I think trying to send our students out of district, my two boys went out of district at an early age for four years. And it comes with a whole host of complications for parents, for students who then don't have their friends with them on a regular basis. So we as a school committee need to be responsible to look at how we bring it in-house and how we can manage that forward movement of having CTE programs and balancing it with what the curricula is that they need. We need to look at the house building programs, the construction programs, but we need to go a step further. We have so many amazing businesses in this town. You drive down Tupelo and you go into any of that business district and that industrial park, and there are so many places that we should be partnering with. We should be partnering with Roger Williams. My son had the benefit of partnering this year until COVID started with Raytheon as a new mentor program. And that to me is the kinds of things that we need to explore more of to provide our kids with all kinds of opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone had a chance to talk on that one. You all didn't know that my next question was going to be about Mount Hope High School. So now I'm going to shuffle it since you all had, it was going to be about technology programs at Mount Hope High School. So now I'll shuffle it around since you all spoke to it. We're going to go back to group number one. Ms. Cabral, you are the first one to answer this, then McBride, Bradshaw and Ben. How would you feel about school choice? As a school committee member, would you welcome it or feel threatened by it?
School choice, well. I know there is a financial aspect attached to that, which is why I would, again, like to see the trades brought in so that students are not looking elsewhere to seek their education. Whatever, whatever the children want to pursue, which is hard for them to decide at that early age. I, I feel like the more options they have here in Bristol Warren would benefit them and to speak to, I forget who else's point it was, but when they're young like that and they do want to stay with their friends, they, it is hard to convince them to branch out for a new experience and leave their friends. It's most of the time probably not going to happen. I would like to see more of the trades here in Bristol, in the Bristol Warren Regional School District.
Ms. McBride.
I'm not particularly in favor of school choice, but our state is a state of school choice. And if you live in Bristol and you want to take a program, program in Portsmouth, you can go to Portsmouth and the money follows the student. And the problem with that is very simply that I have that same class. I have a teacher, I have books, I have a classroom and I have students. But when one student leaves, the money, the district loses money. And so I, that has to be considered when you're looking at school choice. Most of the people who have opted for school choice, if you, if you dig deep enough, are doing it for athletics. But I, I happen to believe that we can do a very good job right where we are. And I think we need to keep working toward that.
Mr. Bradshaw.
Yeah, you know, we, we currently live in, as Ms. McBride said, in, in a state where if you need to go to the Met or if you want to go to the Met in Newport, you have that, you have that ability. If there's a program that you're interested in that we don't offer in Bristol Warren, you are, you are allowed to go and, and pursue that. And, and the financial part aside, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't hope for that for, as a school committee, for any of our students. Ours, our district needs to be robust. Our district needs to have the programs that our, that our, our citizens and our students want. And, and we need to be at, at the point where we're performing head and shoulders above the rest so that we're keeping our students here. We should, we should strive for a district where students don't want to leave Bristol Warren to go to another school for something else.
Bravo, Brian.
Mr. Ben.
In regards to school choice, you know, I, I believe in freedoms where people should be allowed to choose, parents should be allowed to choose wherever they want to send their students. However, as a public educator, I strongly support Bristol Warren Public School System. So I don't think the money should follow the student. You know, if a parent wants to send their child to a charter school in another district, so be it at their expense. Or private, just like a private school. And yes, we send way too many students out of district to East Providence or Rogers for career technical education. We shouldn't be doing that. We should be doing that in-house in, in our district and saving that money rather than sending that money to those districts. So do I support school choice? Well, I, I don't think parents should be handcuffed to keep their students in Bristol Warren if they don't want to. However, I strongly encourage them to do so. And I don't support sending the money with the students.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Okay, yeah, Mr. Odell.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm just going to reiterate a very important point. You know, school choice is a wonderful slogan and everybody can get on board with a terrific slogan. Well, you got to take a look at the dollars. And I feel compelled to drive home this point, this has already been driven home by Mr. Bradshaw and Mrs. McBride. I, I, I'll give you an example. If I got 10 students, my cost per student is $10. Or I keep dreaming, but if it's 10 students, $10, my budget is $100. Now, if one student goes out someplace else to a school choice, I now have nine students. That's what my budget is. My budget is still $100. It comes down to how do you fund it? The state has got to find a way to fund this thing fairly inequitably so the local school district does not get financially penalized. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to a new question. It actually begins with you, Mr. Odell, and it actually has to do with budgeting. So I'm glad you've got a fresh primer on budgeting. Okay, question is, we know that funding will be a chronic problem for this district and has been for several years. Should the school committee be doing more to either control expenses or influence the sources of funding?
It, it's, it's amazing in my 20 years on the school committee, how much the school committee and the director of administration and finance does on a regular, daily, weekly, monthly basis to control the budget. The question always seems to imply, well, gee, you got to do something over here. We've been doing something for decades. We can, the committee is continuing to do things, I'm, I'm confident to that, even though I haven't been there for two years. Problem is this, this twofold problem. Number one, budgeting has become a very complicated issue with grant funding and money coming down from the state and, and how that formula all transpires. It is, it's very complex and a way to bamboozle the public is to make it complicated. And it's way too complicated. We've got to simplify this process. We've got to, we've got to de-politicize the dollars that are coming down from the state. Bristol and Warren's have taken a hose in for the last several years from the state. Thank you very much up there for the people up north. Okay? Unfortunately, budget is connected to politics way too much. We've got to find a way to get around that one, or we're going to continue to have problems with our budget in the years to come.
Ms. Bullard.
Thank you. I think that the school committee has a huge responsibility to monitor, to overlook, to be aware of where dollars are spent. I am not privy to the complex system of how things work. And transparency, I think, is something that we might need more of. Although, again, we can be as transparent as we want. If, if it's too complicated for us to understand, then it doesn't make much difference. I don't know how the school committee could influence funding sources. That's something that I would have to look into, whether it's pressure on ride or between the towns. But I don't think that budgeting is ever going to be untied from politics. I think they're bedfellows.
Ms. Deluce.
Yes, so I definitely think it's important for the district to look into, you know, as many methods of funding as they can as far as grants that are being offered and staying on top of that process. I also feel like it's really important after sitting at quite a few of the budget and facility subcommittee meetings, where it's been discussed that financials aren't always being received in a timely manner. Three months of information is being presented to the subcommittee at once. And like everybody said, it's, can be a tedious process to go through monthly. So three months can definitely lead to making it more complicated. A lot of line items aren't tying, things like that. We really need to get more efficient in how that is being done. If we don't have a strong financial picture of our district, it's going to trickle down to the students eventually. So that's something that I'm super passionate about. We need more efficiency and transparency when it comes to the budget.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks.
Thank you. So I think it's a combination of both portions of the question which you asked. I think we need, we need to look at our, controlling our expenses, identifying where our money is and if it's not working in certain areas, if programs are not successful, et cetera. Redirect that money to other areas. So I think that's part of it. But I also think we have a huge responsibility to influence the sources of funding. And I think that, you know, you look at some of our surrounding towns and their funding is very different than what our funding is. And so we need to figure out how to make that happen, how to influence, how to go after money. I've written, number of grants have been involved with grants as large as $14 million. So we need to figure out how to bring money here. If we want to be a top five in five, we need to figure out the financial piece to make that happen.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Ben.
I agree. We need to attack both aspects of this question. We definitely can restrict our spending and there are ways we can cut spending. However, we also need to give our students the best and our teachers the best resources they can for the best education they can. We just need to do so wisely because we do have taxpayers that we need to have fiscal responsibility towards. And so I do think we should look at alternative revenue sources. You know, I beat a dead horse with the CTE, but Perkins funding, we don't have to spend money on. We don't have to spend money on those funds because those programs, they are federally funded. And there's other income streams out there that we should seek. We spend more than our neighboring districts. And in some cases, we have fewer kids. We have fewer kids, and yet we spend much, much more. So we can do better. We need to.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. McBride, you want to say something else?
Yes. Yes, we spend more money than other districts, but other things are considered in our pupil expenses that are not considered in other districts. Right now, I'd say that we're in on a very precarious edge. We don't have a really good control of how much money we have and where it is and how it's being spent. And it concerns me greatly. It's been talked about. It's been investigated. We need staff, and we don't have staff. We don't have a Budget and Finance Director in our district. And without one of those, we have no way of keeping track of things. So Corey is correct. We get three months at a time. We get a little bit of this and we get a little bit of that. So right now, I'm very concerned about the state of our budget. And I think that the rest of the two communities should be concerned as well. Thank you.
All right, just to set the table for everyone, we have two more questions we're going to ask as part of the program. And all of you have used somewhere between two and five of your 10 comment periods. So you have plenty of time left to talk if you choose to use it. Although, Mr. Odell, you've used seven out of your 10. But everyone else has used between two and five. So we've got plenty of time left. Next question begins with Ms. McBride. And we'll go through the group of McBride, Bradshaw, Ben, and Cabral. What would you do as a member of the school committee to promote diversity in the district's hiring practices?
Well, I think that we're already doing it. We hire the most qualified person available. And I can't imagine us... Well, no, that's not the right way to say it. I would like to believe and will continue to believe that that's exactly how we operate. Diversity, we have... I think we do a really good job of hiring according to who's the best candidate. And I certainly have been on a lot of hiring committees. And we have never looked at a person in any other fashion than what they're applying for. And that's really how I feel.
Mr. Bradshaw?
So let's, I guess we can start with, let's kind of be clear. The school committee hires one person. We hire the superintendent. This past January, the state gave all hiring responsibilities for teachers and staff to the superintendents of those districts. So, you know, we will, and at the same time, what the school committee does is approve a contract for that person, whether it's an administrator or if it's somebody that's bound by one of the union negotiations. So what we can do is absolutely work with our superintendent to make sure that he understands that that's a priority for us as a district so that when our students look to the adults in their building, that they look like them, that they're, you know, that we have gone out and we're finding the best possible candidates that can represent all of our students.
Thank you, Mr. Ben?
I believe we definitely need to go out and recruit the best and the brightest educators available for our students. But we also need to be aware of diversity and inclusive. So in the hiring process, to make sure that we are an equal opportunity employer for all people that apply. As long as they're qualified, they should have a chance for the position. So I do think we are doing the right things in terms of diversity in a district. Do I think we could do better? Again, absolutely. There are positions that go filled without postings. That should not happen in the district like ours. Every position should be posted. And this is not a critique on Dr. Bryce. I have lots of respect for him and the position he's in and the job he's been doing. However, we hired a superintendent without a job posting. In my opinion, we should have posted that position. And if he's the best for the job, he would get it.
Thank you. Ms. Cabral?
I think diversity is absolutely important in this day and age. But I think, I'm not sure, maybe I'm wrong, but Ms. McBride was basically saying, you know, let's hire the best person for the job. And that, to me, is important. And I don't see why that can't include diversity, choosing the best person for the job. And that will get, you know, the job done for the kids and bring them into a successful learning environment and successful members of society.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Brooks?
Thank you. I'm so excited that this question was asked because I think that in the district, we need to do a better job at making our administration, our teaching staff look more like the student body. I had an amazing interview with students from the Student Union at Mount Hope High School. And that group was incredibly diverse. There were so many cultures and sexual orientation backgrounds in that small group. And yet, when we look at the makeup of our teaching staff, I'm not sure that it's as representative. As a parent of biracial students, I've not seen a teacher who looks like my children. When Dr. Bryce arrived that night, I remember going up to him and saying to him how excited I was that he was here. Not only because he's the bright and amazing superintendent, but because he looked like my children. And my children could now have a role model and identify with someone on a day-to-day basis. And to see a man of color in a leadership role in their school district is empowering to my children. So I think there's a way that we can recruit top talent who come from a diverse background, making sure that we preserve the best and the brightest while looking for people who also look like a representation of our student body.
Ms. Bullard?
I just wanted to add to what Jamie said. I think that it is our responsibility as a community, as a school district, to make diversity in hiring, in teaching, in culture a priority. It is time to make those changes and make it a part of our institutional makeup.
Thank you. Mr. Odell?
Yeah, when I was chairperson of the Policy Subcommittee, I checked into this. And we actually have at least two policies in the school committee policy book that says the school district must engage in strategies to encourage women and minorities to apply for positions in Bristol Warren. But then after that, you hire the best person for the job. So to the best of my knowledge, by policy and by law, the school district is already engaging in these practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. McBride?
I just wanted to to say, Brian, you did a great job, a much better job than I did of answering the question. And I agree with you 100%. So thank you.
Great, thank you. By the way, when I was going through all the... Ms. Cabral, did you want to add something? You got to unmute.
Sorry, I keep doing that. So I just wanted to clarify. I don't want it to seem like I came across as diversity not being important. I... My niece is biracial, and I am currently her legal guardian. I do think diversity is absolutely important. But at the end of the day, I still feel like we need to be hiring the best person for the job. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the last question of the night. Ms. Bullard, we'll start with you. And actually, I misrepresented earlier. Until recently, you hadn't used any of your comment blocks. So you still have lots of time available. You could probably give a six-minute answer if you wanted to. All right. This question, if you were listening earlier, you actually heard this one. I think this is the first time I've repeated a question tonight. Do you have a global vision for this district and where it should be going? Is it your goal to get on the school committee and make sweeping changes, to stay the course, or to do something in between?
I do not think that individual agendas are what's most important in committee work. By definition, it's a committee. We all have things that we're passionate about, but the function of the school committee member isn't to pursue that passionate agenda. There are other ways to do that. But we are here to ensure that school districts are responsive to the values, the beliefs, the priorities of our community. So while I have things that are near and dear to my heart, thanks to my work with the Bristol Health Equities Arm, with the Parents as Teachers Program in the district, working with children from birth to kindergarten, I think that there's more and more data that points to the importance of those early years as the essential building blocks for success in school and in life. So those things are things that I would maybe be more... I, you know, I will view through that lens what is going on. And, you know, there are things that I will bring to the committee. But the committee is there to function as a body. And I don't think that personal agenda is really appropriate.
Thank you. Ms. Deluse?
Can you repeat the full question again, please?
Sure. Do you have a global vision for this district and where it should be going? Is your goal to get on the school committee and make sweeping changes, stay the course, or do something in between?
So I feel that maybe possibly somewhere in between. I think we really need to, as a committee, look at what's working and filter that across the district potentially and most probably at the elementary level because we tend to seem to operate in individual entities with the elementary schools, where some will have programs that others don't have, and coming together, figuring out what's working and trying to expand that across the elementary district. And I also feel like it's not an individual thing. We are on a committee. But most importantly, we should be working harder to get community input into changes and really listening to the community about what they want, what they feel is working for their children, but they feel isn't working for the children. And then as a committee, working for the community to try and improve that.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks?
Thank you. So I couldn't agree with you more, Sarah and Corey. I think this is not about personal agendas. This is about the representation of our community, our students, our parents, our teachers, and our administration. So coming in with a personal agenda or having, you know, pet projects, I think, doesn't really hold a place in terms of the committee. I do have a global vision. My global vision is that Bristol is a top school district. I want people to be proud of living in Bristol. And when we talk about our school district, I want that same passion that you hear families from Barrington and families in North Kingston who talk about the fact that their schools are one and two in the state. Bristol needs to be that top school in the state. And I think that we can do it. For me, it's about a balance. There's no sweeping changes. And I certainly don't think that we can maintain status quo. I think we need to preserve the good work that we're doing, that opportunities exist. And we need to look at what those opportunities are so that we can be proud when we say that Bristol is a top five in five.
Mr. Odell?
Yeah, the best way to turn people off is to show up at the square and in ceremony with a broom in your hands. You're going to make sweeping changes. And nobody's going to like you after that one. But I'll tell you, the global vision, I'm a process guy. I protect the means by which you make a decision. I can honor any decision, even if I don't agree with it, if the process is legitimate that was used to make that decision. It's very important to me that we protect the function and the integrity of the school committee and how the school committee operates in harmony with other elements within the school district. That's just a thing that I want to protect. And when you do that, you maintain a global outlook in terms of what's best for the entire district, not what's best for your personal agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Okay, so we're going to move to closing statements, which some of them could be really long if you want them to be. We're going to go back to the beginning. Mr. Bradshaw, you can go first. You have up to, as I do the math, four and a half minutes to close your remarks for the evening.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. Well, now that I have four and a half minutes instead of 30 seconds, I do want to elaborate on my thank you to the East Bay Media Group for hosting this event this evening and for everyone at home or wherever you are that's listening in. You know, four years ago, when I campaigned, I made it a priority to get out and meet voters and knock on doors to hear what their concerns were and really connect. But as we all know, this year's different. In this COVID environment, I'm choosing to connect with the community in safer ways. And so a forum like this, where we can all be safe and socially distant, but still allow the community and the voters to engage with us or listen to us and our views about the future of the district is very important. So thank you, Scott, and thank you, Jacque, and everyone at home for listening. So for the last hour or so, you've heard eight candidates speak on their thoughts for the future of the Bristol Warren Regional School District and eight different people and eight different points of view. But I have to say that I'm really, really lucky. I'm lucky to have been part of the revitalization of this district, a district that listens to students and appreciates and celebrates their differences. I've supported efforts that provide equality and equity for all of our students, promoting safety and security in our schools and striving for high-quality teaching and learning. And we just listened to some answers on global visions. But I really have to say that we have to work together as a school committee because one person alone on an island is just that. They're alone on an island. And you have to build consensus. You have to be able to work together. You have to be able to collaborate with the other members of the committee to move things forward and get things done. Make no mistake, as I said earlier, all students can learn. We just have to find the correct way to connect with them. In 2016 and 2018, the voters elected five new members to the school committee. That's staggering. That's over half. They asked for change. And over the past two years, that change has been happening, top to bottom, from the superintendent down. I'm happy to have been part of bringing about the change that was so desperately needed. Let's continue this important work, continuing focusing on effective change. And please, I ask for your vote. Reelect me to the Bristol Warren Regional School Committee on November 3rd, or if you'd do it sooner, at the town hall or by mail and ballot. So thank you again for listening to us tonight, and God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Ben, you have up to three and a half minutes, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you, Scott and Jacque for hosting. And thank you for everybody watching. I'd just like to follow up with and close with the fact that I will work tirelessly as a representative for the people of the district, of the residents of Bristol. And, you know, a lot of people ask, why do I want to get involved? Why do I want to do this? Well, it's something that I have a passion for. I left the corporate world to go into education over 20 years ago. And I enjoy doing it. And I want to improve our district. And I want to improve our district. I have a lot of experience in the educational realm, not only through degrees, but through real life practice and experience with some of these things as an administrator and a teacher. So I'd like to put this to work for our district and really help us improve. I'm not planning on making any sweeping changes. I'd love to get on and work with the committee as a, as a member of a nine person committee to make sure that we have a global vision of making Bristol Warren one of the best school districts in the state. Currently, we're middle of the pack, 15 or 16, but we should be in the top five, and we can be. There's no question about it. How do we get there? Targeted instruction. Student achievement can be improved through targeted instruction, using data to determine where the gaps are, and focusing in to fill those gaps. And so it can be done. It's been done around the country. We can do that in Bristol Warren. One of the things I'd like to also do is not bring any sweeping changes, but Ms. McBride mentioned not having a director of finance. We haven't had one in about a year. And we need one. We need one who's open and transparent and communicates the finances of the district. I do think we can do better financially for our district. Now, that doesn't mean slashing the budget. No. I support teachers and students, and I don't have any intention of slashing the budget, but I do think we can get better bang for our buck in this district through really scrutinizing the programs and trying to maximize the student end of that, the teacher end of that, and less so on the administrative cost. So I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd or earlier, and I really would like to improve our school district. And, and one of the things that I've been saying since 2016 or 2018, again, is the career technical education programs. You know, I did go to high school in Bristol when we had the home building project and the home building program. And a lot of my friends went through it. I was in the program with Mr. Scuba. It's, it was a fantastic experience, and we need to bring those kind of career technical education programs back. That's something I do have experience with, and I'd love to roll up my sleeves and get together with the nine person committee and the superintendent and really do what the superintendent wants to do, make this top five in five. We can do it. So thank you very much. I appreciate the support.
Thank you. Ms. Cabral, you have up to four minutes.
Okay, well, thank you, Scott and Jacque. I'm thankful for this opportunity and it has definitely had me step outside my comfort zone. This is not what I thought as far as the debate goes and being on Zoom and live, but I'm excited to be a part of the Bristol Warren School Committee. I know everyone expressed their points of view, and Mr. Bradshaw mentioned that it was eight different points of view, but I think that we really are more alike here than we are different, and that we're all here for the kids. My goal is to be a part of the committee to create the best educational experiences for the kids as academics, trade, and social, social, emotional as a whole. Again, I've been a school nurse. My priority is safety and the health and the well-being of our students. That's absolutely paramount to me. I feel like being on the committee that we would bring different strengths and be able to work together to, again, create the best opportunities, the educational opportunities for our children. I feel like it's a good fit for me. I work with students and teachers and parents every day. It's important to make those connections in order to, you know, like somebody else mentioned about finding out what our community wants. It's connections and communication is so important. And I'm, I'm looking forward to diving in and learning a lot and just being a part of this committee. I'm excited about it. And I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McBride, up to three minutes.
I'd like to talk about that, that global vision for a moment. We have lost seven valuable people from our administrative staff this year. And we haven't been able to hire anyone to come in. And that's a problem for me, and it's something that I'd like to stay with until such time as we have a fully occupied staff in our administrative offices. The second thing I'd like to do is that we worked on KMS, and we worked on Hugh Cole. But we have other schools in our district, and they all need things as well. And then we need to be looking at our school district as a district and not as individual entities that exist separate and apart from each other. I'd like to see our curriculums more aligned. I'd like to see a change of culture. And I think we're moving there. I have great hopes with Dr. Bryce where everyone is under the assumption that every child can learn everything that we offer, and that every child should be exposed to everything that we offer. And I don't believe that we have gotten there yet. And it's important to me that we treat Colt Andrews, or Gutierrez, or Rockwell in the same fashion that we're treating the other schools. The other thing I'd like to talk about is I'm the last woman standing from the, the reign of terror where you changed everybody. And that's an okay thing. But there are certain things that you need to have at your disposable, at your disposal. And one of them is some corporate knowledge. I have that corporate knowledge. It's, it's something that happens almost every day. I get a phone call about where something, where did something come from? Why did we do this? When you talk about the home building project, I can give you the entire history of it. I think it's important in this age of change that we make sure that there is some consistency in our school community and on our school committee. So having said that, I voted for myself the other day. I'd like to thank Scott and Jacque for doing this, and I'd really like to thank the audience for sticking around and listening for all this time, and I would appreciate your vote for school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeLuce, you have up to five minutes if you choose.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you. So I have spent about the last two years regularly attending meetings and subcommittee meetings with a plan and debate of possibly running in the future. I feel like doing so has really given me a good, accurate picture of the strength and strengths and weaknesses of the district and what needs improvement. Like I'd spoken before, I really feel like the budget needs to be addressed as soon as possible with efficiency and transparency, because with COVID tossed into that, it has potential to really become an issue. I have spoken to a wide members, a wide range of members in the community over the past two years, teachers, family members of students, students themselves, to try and get an idea too of what their concerns are, what they feel needs to be improved, what they feel is working. Um, I also hope to really work on starting to bring back the checks and balance of the school committee between the admin and the community. And having us all work together, building the trust between all of those aspects. I feel like at points that gets lost in the wayside, a lot of people have communicated that they feel like there isn't as much transparency. Their voice isn't heard. So I really want to be the person to incorporate that back into this district to make sure everybody's voice is heard for every single student. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. So first, Scott, Jacque, and Bristol Media Group, thank you for bringing us together. It's been an exciting night to engage with my colleagues. It's definitely been a refreshing evening to listen to each other. I, I really feel like it's important to capitalize on the great work that the current committee has been doing, build synergy and collaboration. Coming into this, there are two things that I'm focused on. One is assuming positive intentions, and two is seeking to understand. I want to close with a story. As a young girl, I watched my dad serve the town of Warren as a councilman. He taught me the importance of serving your community. That was instilled in me, and so now I'm seeking that opportunity to serve. I was inspired to run for the school committee because I had been a lone voice and felt like one parent trying to make a difference. That path can be lonely and defeating at times. I want Bristol to be a great place to work, live, and raise a family. I think we are, but if we want to attract people to live in our community and to bring new business to our community, then we have to be a solid school district that ranks in the top of our state. We can and we will get there, but it isn't without hard work, dedication, and determination. My sleeves are rolled up, and I'm ready to get started. I'm inspired to serve this district and be a part of that change. I ask for your vote between now and November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Dell, up to two minutes.
Two minutes. Thank you very much. This is, this is the time of the night where I guess we're supposed to sell ourselves and present myself as the top choice, so I get the votes to get into the school committee. So I do want to take a few seconds to do something very unusual, I suppose, in this part of the evening. I just want to say that Jamie Brooks, I, I've enjoyed your commentary immensely this evening. I really have. I, I was very encouraged by, by everything you had to say. I hope that doesn't steal any votes away from me, but I got to be quite honest about it. I really enjoyed you tonight very much. As for myself, I was told a long time ago that if your only desire to working a particular job is to one day retire from it, you, you're in the wrong job. You want a job that you love. And I'll tell you what, I'm long past retirement age, and I'm still delivering mail because I love it. And I'll tell you what, again, I spent 20 years in a school committee. It was a wonderful time. I spent two years off. It was a bit of a break. But you know what? I love doing that too. And I would love the opportunity to get back on that committee, roll my sleeves up, dig, dig in there, do the things that I know that I can do. I got a 20 year track record. Not every vote went over tremendous, but I'll tell you what. If I had one or two unpopular ones, that's a pretty good record for 20 years, I think, you know? I really do. And, and all you're gonna do is check my public voting record, check up on the things I've said and done. And you've got a long history of what I stand for and what I've been able to accomplish along with eight other people. I'm a, I'm a team player, and I know that one person accomplishes nothing. But a school committee that's together and with it and want to move forward together will accomplish great things. And there are things that we must accomplish. There are things that we're missing in the school district, and we got to get this stuff sorted out and fixed. And I would really love an opportunity to be part of that team, to be able to move this school district forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well timed. Ms. Bullard, you get to bring us home for up to five minutes with a resounding finish.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Scott and Jacque and East Bay Media Group, and to all the rest of the candidates and everybody who's watching. This campaign has been a challenging and eye opening experience for me, as I'm quite sure the work of a school committee member is too. I look forward to that challenge, and I am confident I can work to build on everything that our district has to offer. I became a citizen last year, and when I heard myself saying someone should do something about that, about school district issues, I knew I no longer had an excuse for it not to be me. I realized that I could be a good representative for the families in the district and for the community as a whole, because I believe a strong education system is essential for a healthy and prosperous community. I think I bring to the table a perspective that's different from the other candidates and others on the committee. I'm a certified parent educator, and I worked with young families in the district for six years, promoting optimal early development and the health of children by supporting and engaging their parents and caregivers. I spent four years working for the Bristol Health Equity Zone, addressing issues like mental health and suicide prevention, substance abuse awareness and prevention, physical health and nutrition, and child development. This is really important work, and I remain connected to the HES as a volunteer. I served as secretary for Bristol Warren Thrive by Five and Beyond, which is a nonprofit local network of collaborating partners supporting families in their efforts to help children reach their full potential. I think my years working with these organizations has given me a whole host of valuable connections and knowledge of the plethora of mostly untapped resources that are available for families. Every child deserves a healthy and equitable start in life, followed by an education that fits. I think social and emotional education is an imperative, and I believe we need to make, work harder to make sure that all families receive the help they need. I hope to contribute to a school system that offers an excellent and innovative education to all students, no matter their abilities, their ambitions, or their interests, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that concludes our forum. Thank you all. As I said, well done. I know it's not easy to tackle pretty substantive questions in a short amount of time and do it coherently and, and do it live. So well done, everyone. We have been recording this forum. It will be uploaded to YouTube tomorrow. It'll be posted on our website and shared on Facebook. So the many voters who didn't get a chance to watch it all will have a chance to. And again, thank you all. Great job, and don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacque.